Okay, April, are we ready to report out?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The time is 7:25 PM and we are back from the closed session. And having discussed the items in the closed session, I'd ask the City Council, I'm sorry, the City Attorney to please report up.
Mr. Mayor, there are no reportable actions from closed session.
Okay, so that will take us to Agenda Item Number Nine on this meeting, which is to adjourn. So the time is 7:26 PM and I am adjourned in the closed session meeting. And that will move us to our next meeting. The time is 7:26 PM and I call to order this meeting of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. Please note, as was previously explained at the last meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by AB 361. And the video and teleconference meeting is authorized and will be decided upon for continuation of a 30-day period at every meeting, including tonight's agenda. If we have no other announcements on that, I will ask if the clerk would please call the roll for this meeting.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Welch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Mayor Bauders.
Here. Thank you all for being here. Item Three is approval of the agenda for this meeting for the Mesa Board. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And motion by Member Martinez and a second by Member Welch. To approve this agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Agenda has been approved. Ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment. This is for the Mesa Board meeting, so if you are here tonight and you wish to comment on the City Council meeting, we will get to that in a couple of minutes. And I will have a public comment for that. So I do see a hand raised, so I'm assuming this is a hand for the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. So I will recognize Archana Horsting for two minutes, please. Two minutes.
Hello, I'm meant to raise my hand for the City Council, I'm so sorry.
Okay, stop it. All right, we'll lower that for you when we get to the council meeting. I'll announce again that those who might be looking to speak can comment at that time. I'll have you raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, so seeing no other public comment, we'll move to the action items. There's only one item, members. It's our 361 resolution. Is there any discussion and debate? Seeing none, is there, actually, it's an action item. Is there any public comment on AB 361? Seeing none, public comment being closed, no discussion. I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Martinez, second by Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Thank you. The resolution being approved. There are no other items on this men, this agenda. The time is 7:29 PM and this meeting is adjourned. We have one more short meeting to handle to the members of the public before we get to the City Council meeting. So the time is 7:29 PM. I'd like to call to order the City of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note that we've given the AB 361 announcement for the meetings this evening. Please note that all members of this board are still present. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Thank you. Are there any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment for the redevelopment agency. See no hands raised. Do we receive any comment cards for this meeting, April?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, thank you. So now I will call for the consent calendar items 6.1 and 6.2. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Member Welch, second by Member Donahue to approve consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. We have one action item, which is the AB 361 resolution for this board. Is there any public comment on the AB 361 resolution? Seeing and hearing none, did we receive any comment cards, April?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comment is not closed. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
I move AB 361.
Second.
Motion by Donahue, seconded by Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. The time is 7:30. Madam Clerk, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, now we get to our main meeting. So the time is 7:31 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City Council of the City of Emeryville's General Meeting for today, October 4th, 2022. At this, we've admonished that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by AB 361 during the COVID state of emergency from the governor and that all members of this board are still present for this meeting. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Member Welch, second by Member Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Thank you. Members, we have one special order of the day. We have one proclamation to do tonight, which is a proclamation declaring the month of October 2022 as Disability History Month. And I'm going to read this brief proclamation and invite a couple of members who are here tonight from the public to speak on that item. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville declaring the month of October 2022 as Disability History Month. Whereas on March 3rd, 1972, the Center for Independent Living was established in Berkeley, California as the first independent living center in the United States founded in order to give support to people with disabilities and enable them to live independent and dignified lives. And whereas the Center for Independent Living's grassroots advocacy resulted in the passage of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, in addition to some of the first curb cuts in the nation being installed in Berkeley, California. And whereas the work of the Center for Independent Living became a catalyst for the emerging independent living movement, which grew to over 400 independent living centers in the United States and similar programs in 20 countries across the globe. And whereas the Center for Independent Living continues to support people with disabilities today through programming, services, advocacy, and community building. And whereas 2022 marks the 50th anniversary of the Center for Independent Living, serving as an opportunity for the City of Emeryville and the community to reaffirm and strengthen our commitment to disability rights and justice through education, policy, and advocacy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that the month of October 2022 is hereby declared Disability History Month and that is further proclaimed by the Mayor and the City Council of Emeryville today at a regular meeting held October 4th, 2022. So with that, I would like to, if you could give me a moment to transition on my screen, I would like to invite a couple folks to speak briefly on this. If we could please promote Ted Jackson, if we see, if, April, if you see these names, these are the folks that were invited to speak really briefly. I don't see that name. Itzel Romero. I have Wesley Lipping. And Tiffany Hawn. Those were the names. And then Emma Martin as well, please. So I see Emma, Wesley, and Tiffany, if we could promote each of them to speak in capacity. And Tiffany, is there anyone else who's here with you this evening that would, you were going to have to speak briefly?
Hmm, I'm not sure yet. But that's, I think those people you mentioned in, you mentioned earlier are available.
Yep, they're here. So, okay, what I'd like to do is, as we discussed, I'm actually going to let Emma begin because that was my contact person. Emma, I'd like to just welcome you from the Center of Independent Living and give you a couple of moments to speak briefly on the proclamation.
So you want me to speak first?
Hi, Tiffany. I'll speak first. Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Emeryville City Council and Mayor Bauders for honoring the Center for Independent Living tonight. My name is Emma Martin. I use she, hers pronouns. And I'm the Community Engagement Program Manager here at the Center for Independent Living, which is, we are a cross-disability advocacy and direct services organization serving northern Alameda County, including the wonderful city of Emeryville. And I wanted to thank you all so much for recognizing us tonight and I appreciate you reading out the proclamation. And I just wanted to share, I really want to give most of the next couple of minutes to our youth advocates who wanted to address the council tonight. I just wanted to share briefly that it has been such an honor to work with young disabled activists in dreaming up and writing this proclamation and then collaborating with the Emeryville City Council to bring it into the community. The passion and commitment of both Tiffany and Wesley, who will be speaking in just a moment, are really the heart of this proclamation. And it's been so powerful to have our youth driving this process. So I just wanted to thank you all and then also thank our wonderful youth who will be speaking, either Tiffany or Wesley, if they would like to address the council next and just share a little bit about their experience working with the Center for Independent Living. Be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. I'll offer Tiffany the opportunity to go ahead and speak first.
Okay. My name is Tiffany Hawn. My pronouns is she and her. And I'm a voluntary youth advocate and consultant for the Center for Independent Living, DIL for short. When I first got involved with the Center for Independent Living, it was initially for like vocational training to help me improve resume skills and job skills to help me get like a part-time job. Eventually, as time goes on, I got more involved with some projects. I even got involved with another, like, connection with a disability organization in St. Louis, Missouri. But when I look back, I see it not just like an opportunity, but it also helped me reflect my life. As a disabled youth, I felt like I had to overcome my limitations to achieve my goals. My, because I have like autism, but I also have like cardiac murmur. When I was born with that, I had to have like, have like full, four heart surgeries to correct problem for it to stay healthy. And it does like, I did like get like some back flows. I do kind of get, I quit easily, quite easily if I stress myself. On, as for autism though, like, I do have like a little problem with, problem with trying to keep up academically and socially. So I did get some accommodations. I do get like some assistance. I do, they just kind of like help me support my needs to achieve like my academic goals right now. I, when I look back at this, I feel like the concept of a combination of autism, the combination of cardiac murmur is not just like a, a weakness. Just because you have a disability doesn't mean you have a weakness. It's just like a hidden talent, a potential, potential skill you can, that other handy, disabled people can relate to or even acknowledge. And I think to the CIL's influence, I believe that normal people should not underestimate disabled individuals as they can easily do anything they want to do. They can easily demonstrate their skills in their projects, take up high-paying jobs, even taking in special activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. I'd like to next welcome and invite to speak Wesley Lipping. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wesley Lipping. My pronouns are she, her. I'm part of the Youth Advocacy at CIL and I'm a college student at East Penn. I started to be involved with CIL a few years ago, an eye roll in their self, their self-advocacy week-long class. Then I started participating in more of their activities. The CIL has impacted me in a way that it has given me the skills and resources to help me succeed in the future. And it has also allowed me to learn more about the disability community and the history of the CIL. I have learned there are many CIL services and programs for youth and young with disabilities. These programs include the Youth Self-Avocacy Program, Living Growth Program, Culture Club, and many more. Growing up as an autistic girl, I never felt like I fit into that label because I had looked and acted like a typical girl. I was always surrounded by neurotypicals or people who were autistic. I never felt completely neurotypical, but at the same time, I didn't feel autistic. For example, when meeting a person who was autistic, I wasn't as comfortable with them as I was with my neurotypical peers. In my life, I have struggled with social skills and talking skills. I wanted to fit in with others but couldn't because of, I was autistic. I felt lonely and alienated even when I was, freaked out when someone yelled at me.
She's, she's speaking really, really low.
Back on this, I am thankful for their support. I wouldn't be where I am today. CIL is a forum for people with disabilities and disabilities who can get some support later on.
Thank you to both Wesley and Tiffany for coming and sharing their personal journey, both living with a disability, but also the advocacy you do for other people who live with disabilities. It's extremely important that voices like yours are lifted in that conversation or part of all the discussions we have, both as public agencies and providers, in helping to ensure that the work we do is inclusive and accessible to everybody. So really grateful for your work and also to Emma and everybody else at the Center for Independent Living for 50 years of leadership that went far beyond the scope of Berkeley, California, and has helped change and improve lives for people around the world. So thank you so much for that. Are there any members who wish to give comment on the special proclamation of the day? Member Donahue.
I just want to say that we'll all be joining the ranks of disabled if we age significantly. And I think that the disability rights movement has empowered seniors in a really good way.
Thank you. Okay, well, so thank you for coming for that item. April, can you make me, give me co-host abilities for this meeting, please? And I'm going to move to getting close to public comment. So I'll just flag that for folks who are coming up close to it. So if you're here to public comment on an agenda item, we'll have that in a moment. So next up is Item Five, which is the announcement of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk.
There's no report to make, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Item Six is Councilmember Special Announcements or Reportings on Meetings and Attendance. Is there anybody who wishes to report anything? I'll just report that since the city authorized, you know, for travel this year, authorized me to represent the city over here in the Netherlands, I was a guest of the Kingdom of the Netherlands and the Dutch Cycling Embassy this past week on an urban mobility study tour. I had meetings with various government officials at the federal level, including federal transportation ministers, police authorities, as well as local mayors, aldermen, and other folks here who are in the business of helping make cities safe and more people-oriented. I did that in Utrecht and Neemehun and Rotterdam and Haag. It was a very informative week. I was here with four state Department of Transportation directors and three other elected officials from the United States. Really learned and saw a lot. I know Mohammed is probably here. Mohammed, I've taken about 1,000 photos of ways we could do diverters. Had a bicycling extravaganza and then I ended my trip, I'm ending my trip right now. Ended my trip cycling from the Netherlands across the coast and down through Belgium and had a real interesting opportunity to just see how many cities over here are making their streets more people-oriented and safer. So I'm happy to talk about that at any point in the future with anyone who's interested. Thank you to the council for authorizing that travel. Member Martinez.
Thank you. I thought I might take this opportunity to remind our community that our service in Emeryville for electricity is going to 100% renewable wind and solar starting this October. So it's an exciting change at a very reasonable addition of three-quarters of a cent per kilowatt hour. So that's about three or four more dollars per bill for a typical home. So I just am proud of that change and happy to switch, make that switch.
Thank you. And thank you for all your work on our EBC board on behalf of its chair of the board. Okay, seeing no other hands. Item Seven is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I have no report for this evening, but happy to answer any questions. Obviously, we have a big agenda tonight, so I'll be brief and thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pulitzer. Any questions for him? Seeing none? Okay, Item Eight is Ex parte communications. Members, please review the calendar in front of you today for tonight's agenda. I'm just looking to see whether or not you have anything that is a reportable item for ex parte communications. You can just raise your hand if you have something. Okay, I see no hands. Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move beyond ex parte communications. So for the members of the public, this is now the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment for anything on tonight's consent calendar, which is Items 10.1 through 10.7 inclusive, or for an item that is not on tonight's calendar, will get two minutes to do so. So I know Archana Horsting had her hand raised. I would like to, her hand isn't raised right now, but that's not her problem. That's just because we asked her to do it in this meeting. So, Archana, I don't want to assume you want to speak again, but if you want to use the raise hand feature. While she's, look, there she is. I'd like to recognize her first, please, because she was here from a prior meeting. Thank you. For two minutes. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm so happy to be with you tonight using Zoom. And I want to tell you how much I want to encourage you guys to think deeply about making the best possible art center that can be made, given our resources. I believe that it will be the jewel and the crown of our arts district and that everybody from the youngest students to the oldest seniors, to the staff and the city council, to the artists and the art lovers, will, and our visitors from other cities who always ask me, where can I see the art? And if it's during celebration for the arts, I might be able to direct them. They can see the murals, but they can't see many of the things that our artists make, from film to dance to poetry. It's very hard for, for the outside world to find these things in, in Emeryville. And we are now an arts district thanks to your good works. And it is very important that we live up to our designation as an arts district. And it's very possible to do this. There are many ways to raise money for it. It doesn't mean the city has to pay for every penny in the future. That's not the situation. And I'm happy to explain it if anybody wants more time. But I know it's a late night and you guys have already done a lot, so I won't go on and on. But please choose a really elegant aesthetic plan that will serve all the art forms. And please know that this will be a great legacy to this council and to the city. And I hope if anyone has any more questions or wants to know my thoughts, I'll be happy to do it later on. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Archana. The next speaker to recognize, please, for two minutes is Don Hockett. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Emeryville City Council, staff, and the members of Emeryville community. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Don Hockett and I'm organizer at the NorCal Carpenters Union Local 713, based out in Alameda County. What are standards for labor, you may ask? It is apprenticeship, healthcare, local hire, and a livable wage. Area standard labor language needs to be the template that developers use in Emeryville. I would like to express to you that without these standards, the construction force is size, seismotically abused throughout wage staff. 1099, where the workers have no workers' comp when injured on the job while working around many safety violations. Healthcare and a livable wage are necessary to the workers building these projects. Apprenticeship programs ensure that the projects are built to the highest degree. And local hire ensures that not only tax revenue from the money spent by the workers, but ensures those workers can enjoy the basics things in like, in life, like spending evenings with their families, maybe attending a child's little league game instead of sitting in traffic for over two hours or even longer in most cases, right? The language that should become the policy here in Emeryville and what would support responsible contractors that are already doing the right thing for their clients, employees, and the city itself. These responsible contractors have proven time and time again that they can perform at the higher standards. This policy would booster Hayward's working class and cultivate a responsible market for good contractors. This would create a minimum standard for developers that are coming here, telling them that not only do you value your citizens, but that you build, value the land that is being built on. By adding area standard labor to the city's prequel language, you will show your constituents that you value not just the city, but also the men and women building the city itself. I would very much like to have a real and valuable conversation with each and every one of you, as well as the developers listening in right now, and how we could cultivate a prosperous construction industry in Emeryville. NorCal carpenters have thousands of members in Alameda County and each and every one of them could be a great asset to any future projects you plan. I look forward to talking to you more about this with you in the future if you ever have time. My name is Don Hockett. I'm a organizer for the carpenters.
Thank you, Don, for your comment. The next speaker will be Philad Satterfield. Good evening. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
Hello. Hello, this is Philad Satterfield. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you concerning the, the Arts Center. I would like to just say that I think my colleague, Archana Horsting, has articulated very wonderfully the importance of it, but I'd like to just add to that just a bit. I've been here in Emeryville since 1974 and I've maintained a professional studio from that time until the present. The importance of the artistic community, particularly in developing the city of Emeryville as we know it now, I think is really understated. Particularly when the city joined the, the Emeryville artist community and supporting the co-op as we, the Emeryville co-op as we have now, was very important in terms of identifying and making Emeryville a center for creative activity. It has a wide community, a very profound community of poets, actors, theater people, musicians, particularly visual artists. And I see the Arts Center as being a kind of a center, of the, of the heart of the, of the city. A place of, that will draw visitors from locally, nationally, internationally, and really just be a thriving art center as we are identified now, I understand, as a, as a kind of art district. This center will have profound implications on visitors, on commerce, on the development of, of scholarship, mentorship within the community, supporting the school system, but, but most importantly, for building a really healthy and vibrant community in terms of literacy, particularly in the arts and also in humanity. So thank you very much and I hope that you will consider this project with urgency and... you very much, and I hope that you will consider this project with urgency and consider it also as a declaration to produce a world-class, first-class institution of art and culture and humanity that serves all of the above. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, and good evening too. April, do we receive any written comment cards for non-agenda items?
No, Mayor, we did not.
April, you're on mute.
Sorry, Mayor. No, we did not.
Okay, thank you so much, and thanks for handling the public comment. Public comment is now closed, and we will go to the next agenda item, which is item 10, which is our consent calendar. Members, before your items 10.1 through 10.7, is there any item members wish to poll for a question or discussion or do not wish to have on consent this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we've already taken comment on this. I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Martinez to approve items 10.1 through 10.7. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Thank you. That's approved. Item 11, members, is our one public hearing for the evening before we go to action items. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville granting a waiver from the Noise Ordinance to Brandon Corporation for night work related to the beach cleaning operations that will be part of the Point Emory Shoreline Protection Project, which is project number EPW 18101, to occur on dates that would be determined between October 5th and 28th of 2022. And I will ask if our Public Works Director Mohammed Alawi would like to give a brief presentation.
Yes, if April can bring up PowerPoint. Thank you. And as already read by our mayor, we are asking for a waiver for the Brandon Corporation on the dates that you can see here in October. Next slide. The location of the work is out there at Point Emory, close to the shore. Next slide. The night work will be occurring between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, again between October 5th and the 28th. The work consists of removing debris from the bay at the lowest of the two daily low tides. And this is, again, in the month of October, and because of this, these low-low tides, as they're called, occur only during nighttime hours, so it limits our opportunity. And although, of course, the contractor is aware of when low tides are, it doesn't necessarily, you don't necessarily know how much available land there is until the low tide actually exposes itself. And for that reason, in order to complete the project by the contract end date, we need this waiver. Next slide. Again, reemphasizing here, BCDC's permit allows us to work up to the 30th, and our contract is ending on October 14th. Next slide. We do recommend that this be approved, this waiver be approved, so the project can be completed on time and within the allowable permit period. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Are there any questions for Mohammed or other members of the staff as to what is being requested by this public hearing, Noise Ordinance waiver? Okay, this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:59 PM. Hear ye, hear ye, all who wish to come and speak in the matter before us, item 11.1, at a public hearing, now have three minutes to do so. And Madam Clerk, do you receive any written comment cards for the public hearing this evening?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, and the last call for public comment in this public hearing. Okay, Madam Clerk, the time is still 7:59 PM, and the public hearing is now closed. And I will turn to members for discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss this?
Like to move the item.
Okay, and let me just confirm it's a resolution. Okay, great, so we have a motion. Is there a second motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Okay, that's five ayes. Ayes have it. And so the resolution is approved. The public hearing is over. Item 12.1 is a discussion on whether to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville opposing the two statewide ballot measures that would expand gaming in California. Members, I requested this, and I appreciate your indulgence at the last meeting. I'd like to welcome to the podium up here, please, if we could advance Nicola DeLuca from Townsend Public Affairs, who we've asked to come this evening and give a brief presentation on propositions 26 and 27, which may or may not, depending on what we hear tonight, have impacts on the Oaks Card Room situated in the city. Good evening, Nicola.
Good evening. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes.
All right, sounds good. So, Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you so much for the invitation to come and present to you all tonight. I'm going to talk on two measures, Proposition 26, and then Proposition 27, and the lens is through what is the impact on the city of Emeryville, primarily the Oaks Card Room. I'm going to do a quick overview. I'll then quickly give my recommendations, and then happy to answer any questions. So, Prop 26, as I'm sure you all have been inundated with the ads on TV, the billboards, the mailers. This is the tribe-sponsored sports betting ballot measure, and it does the following. It expands the games tribes can legally offer at their casinos to dice games and roulette. It allows tribal casinos and the state's four horse racetracks to offer in-person sports betting. It levies a 10% tax on the bets placed at racetracks, and requires the state reimbursement for regulating it. After the, covering the cost of tax collection, the funds generated would go to the Department of Public Health for problem gaming and mental health research, to the Department of Justice for enforcement of gaming rules, and to the state's general fund. And now, here's the kicker. This proposition also creates a new civil enforcement tool for certain gaming laws, allowing anyone who becomes aware of certain violations to file a civil action and seek up to $10,000 in penalties. The world of gaming is somewhat new to me, and I spoke to a handful of people, and this $10,000 penalty violation is what really has upset the card rooms due to the fact it would give anyone, any person in public, the ability to go after the card rooms. The history is, over the years, the casinos have been asking the various attorney generals to go after the card rooms as they have a dispute over how certain games are named. For example, do you, does a casino have ownership over the game 21? Does a card room have ownership over a game named Texas Hold'em? There's disputes on how these games, how they're named and called, and it's really the focus of the casinos wanting to go after the card rooms, hence this ability for civil enforcement. It's no secret that Prop 26 would impact local government revenues, because if there is this ability to go after a card room with the new civil enforcement method, that's obviously going to hurt their pocketbook, thereby impacting cities. The supporters of Prop 26 include 27 tribes and tribal organizations, the California District Attorney Association, the Lieutenant Governor, and others. Opposition comes from the California Republican Party, the California Black and Hispanic Chambers of Commerce, many, many, many cities with card rooms such as Clovis, Commerce, Compton, Huntington Park, and others. And then just kind of a little tidbit, a total of 149 million has been invested in this race. Supporters have raised around 107 million, and opponents have raised around 42 million. My recommendation, based on the Oaks and the strong relationship they've had with the city, is to oppose Prop 26. Then Prop 27 would legalize online sports betting outside of Native American lands, and allow gaming companies to offer online sports betting if they partner with a tribe. So this also allows gaming companies such as FanDuel and DraftKings to offer online sports betting if they strike a deal with the tribe. There is a 10% tax on all companies or tribes offering sports betting, and then after covering the state's regulatory costs, most of the revenue from the tax and the licensing would go to the homeless program, which you all know, HAP, the Homeless Housing Assistance Prevention Program. It's estimated that this could raise up to 500 million a year. And as you all know, the HAP program goes to the Big 13 cities, 58 counties, and then the continuums of care. Fiscal fact, this would increase state revenues due to the sports betting payments and penalties, the local government impact. It does beef up the HAP program, which then, you know, provides funding to cities. Support for Prop 27 includes national sports betting platforms like FanDuel, Bet MGM, FanDuel, a bunch of Native American tribes, the big city mayors, and Major League Baseball, which is interesting. Opposition of Prop 27 includes 50 Native American tribes, the California Democratic and Republican Parties, the California Teachers Association, and the League of California Cities. My recommendation, based on potential scope creep, and based on just being consistent, would be to oppose Prop 27. Yes, it's great that there's some funding for HAP, but keeping in mind, last year's budget allocation was a billion, and this proposal's up to 500 million, so the question could really be, where would the funds end up going? Probably to the cities with the greatest need. So those are my recommendations. Oppose 26, oppose 27, and then happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Excellent summaries. Thank you, Nicola. Do members, before I go to public comment, just have questions on the ballot measures? Member Welch?
Nicola, thank you for that presentation. With Proposition 27, does it mention anything about oversight of the funds? I mean, it says, okay, it can be up to 500 million, but, I mean, who is making sure that money is going where it's supposed to go?
Councilmember, that's a great question. So the oversight would be with the Business Consumer Services Agency, because they're the ones that now oversee the HAP program. So it would remain the same. Basically, this would just be an extra infusion of funding to the HAP program. The oversight has been definitely a level of interest in the governor's administration. Cities that receive these HAP dollars have to do homeless plans, and then at the beginning of when they get the funds, and at the end, how the funds are spent. There is some frustration that maybe the oversight of the funds isn't what it should be, and it could be greater. So oversight has been mentioned before on the HAP funds, but to answer your question directly, oversight remains the same. It would be within the Business Consumer Services Housing Agency, and it would just be essentially increased to the current level of funding they're getting now.
Thank you. And just one more follow-up on Proposition 26. As far as the lawsuits that can be brought towards card rooms, what's the threshold of proof that one would have to bring forward to potentially bring a lawsuit against a card room? Is it just they have a potential issue around the name of the game, or I think that I have read something about there's a disagreement around if, who can be the banker within the game itself, whatever card game is being played. They could just, it sounds like they could somewhat bring just frivolous lawsuits, and that's just my, that's just my opinion from what you have given to us in the summary, but was there any, like, specific detail as far as what could be brought as far as a lawsuit, or could it just be an assumption that there is some mishandling around the banker or the game in the card room?
Councilmember, that is a great question. I also want to highlight the staff report written by the city staff was really thorough, too. And thank you. That's also an issue. It's the bank. Who is the bank? How does the bank rotate? My understanding, these are all 10,000 per alleged violation, and for any alleged violation that could have happened, I am happy to read through the proposition again and then follow up on exact level of proof. But my understanding from my reading, it's per alleged violation. So my sense is it's a little loose.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? And now is the time for public comment. Members of the public wish to comment on the proposed and potential action of the city council in relations to state propositions 26 and 27. We'll have three minutes to speak on those items. Do we receive any comment cards in advance of tonight's meeting for this item?
No, we did not, Mayor.
Thank you, April. And so public comment is now closed. I'll turn to members. Is there any discussion? Members wish to discuss this item? Or I'll entertain motion on this? We can take motions separately if members wish to discuss the items or take different actions between them. Maybe I'm happy to facilitate a brief conversation. If, by a show of hands, is a litmus test here, is people... Well, here's the thing, we don't have to take any action. So is there anybody here who wishes to take no action on these items? Okay? Is there anybody here who agrees completely with the recommendation to oppose both items?
I do, and honestly, I really appreciate getting this broken down for me so comprehensively by Nicola and the staff report. The proposition system is flawed in that it's hard for me to even understand what the purpose of these is sometimes.
Yeah, I agree. Really well laid out for us. I'm glad, I appreciate everyone agreeing to have this quickly, because this is a bottom-line item for our city's budget, so we need to be proactive about it. And I was really on the fence about what to do about 27, but I think I'm not anymore. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, then. I'm going to make a motion that the city of Emeryville take an official position of oppose to both propositions 26 and 27.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Bouders, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to oppose propositions 26 and 27 on behalf of the city of Emeryville, and have the mayor sign a letter to that effect. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Bye-byes, no-nos. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We'll move to item 12.2, which is a report to the city council of the city of Emeryville for recommendations made by the Parks and Recreation Committee for council consideration. And who will be presenting that this evening? Hi, Rebecca.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Rebecca Sermono. I'm the interim Community Services Director. Thank you, Mayor Bouders and fellow council members. The city council is asked to receive this report from the Parks and Recreation Committee and provide direction to staff on action or further committee consideration of specific items as desired. Potential direction could include referral to a planned or ongoing planning process such as the capital improvement program, referral to another committee such as the Transportation Committee or the Budget Committee for further review or acceptance and filing of the report for future council consideration. The first of two recommendations is regarding nature play areas. The Parks and Recreation Committee's nature play recommendations presents a range of policies and programs and projects that can be implemented to create nature play areas and connect children with nature programs. The recommendations include initial steps that can be taken with little to no cost for staffing, for example, adopting a children's outdoor Bill of Rights. Establishing the vision will help to generate funding for some of our higher costs and staffing recommendations that may be implemented over time. The second recommendation is to prioritize and start the groundwork needed for CIP CF-01, East Shore State Park Pal Street Bioswale Project. The recommendation includes the city council, direct city staff to coordinate with East Bay Regional Park District and other appropriate agencies to move forward with improvements to East Shore State Park to enhance its natural habitat values and accommodate passive recreation. In addition to providing a new recreation area, moving forward with the proposed Bioswale will address Pal Street flooding and provide further educational opportunities. Tonight with us are Park and Recreation Committee members Gail Donaldson and Patricia Weber, and who are also available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. April, can we promote? There she is. Thank you so much. So we have two members of our committee here. I want to welcome Gail Donaldson and Patty Weber from the city of Emeryville's Parks and Recreation Committee. Thank you so much for spending some of your evening with us and for the work you do on behalf of the committee. What I'd like to do, actually, is just ask if either of you would like to add anything to what Rebecca has shared, and I see Patty's hand is up. Or can I do? Go ahead.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I would actually like permission to go over three minutes. I don't know if I'm considered a public comment or not, but if I am...
You can go over three, you can go over three minutes. Just please use discretion as to how long you speak.
Okay, a little over four. Okay, as Rebecca mentioned, I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee and helped develop this recommendation. And actually, just so you know, I'm speaking on the nature play area recommendation for children. For the last five years, I've been an active member of the community, and I spend a great deal of time talking to Emeryville families about their needs. A major need, as shown in this recommendation, is for a Children in Nature Connection program in Emeryville. Endless studies have shown major emotional, social, cognitive, and physical benefits of being in nature. They confirm what many of us have always known intuitively, that it is good for our entire beings to be outside in nature, smelling flowers, studying butterflies, tasting wild blackberries, listening to the birds sing, and feeling the breeze. Nature engages all the senses. It calms us and connects us. If we think back to our own childhoods, our fondest memories of outdoor play are likely not at a playground with a seal structure, plastic slide, and rubberized surfacing, but instead exploring a neighborhood creek, climbing a tree, building a fort out of fallen branches, camping, or spending a day at the beach with friends and family. Unfortunately, children's access to nature is significantly decreased, particularly in urban cities, causing what is known as a nature deficit. Emeryville is no exception, with extremely limited natural space for children to be immersed in and freely explore. Even our beloved Marina Park, which while it has lawn space and great views, offers no safe areas to explore amongst the strips of trees and plants with no barrier to the adjacent parking lots. Our other parks offer not much more than lawn and a few trees, and sharps are regularly found on our beaches. Temmis Golf Playground, despite its name, has no creek to be seen unless you count the blue strip of paint on the rubberized surfacing that represents the creek that has been forced to flow underground. Emeryville families must spend excess time, money, and energy traveling in order to spend an afternoon immersed in and exploring nature. Time, money, and energy are all limited resources for families these days, and as we know, they are limited far more for some than others, making access to nature yet another major equity issue. So much so that the Biden-Harris administration recently released their own commitment to promote equitable access to parks and nature in communities. Emeryville's Parks and Recreation Committee is recommending that the city create a Children in Nature Connection program, as is being done in cities across the country, as the need for such programs becomes obvious and imperative. Our neighbor city, San Francisco, is a leader in this movement, and their program will be an excellent example as Emeryville starts her own. There are also children and nature organizations offering city support, and this movement is attracting federal, state, nonprofit, and corporate funding opportunities. Emeryville can take action immediately through dedicating a modest amount of staff time to using these resources to develop an outline of a program and begin searching for funding. I also urge you to dedicate funds in the CIP to create robust program that changes policy, brings nature programming equitably to all children, and creates nature exploration areas easily accessible to all families, starting in our existing city parks. By courageously committing to the program, you'll make Emeryville leaders in this movement, which, while based on a simple concept of bringing us back to a time when children played in nature, actually has major benefits that address critical issues facing us today and in the future. With this one program, Emeryville can take steps to begin repairing, one, the mental health crisis of our children, two, the physical health crisis of our children, three, the lowering of innovation and creativity, cognitive ability, and academic performance in our children, four, the inequitable access to nature, and five, the climate and environmental crisis, as a program would both restore green space and produce stewards of the environment. I urge you to deeply and strongly consider this recommendation to address these critical needs of our children. If you have any questions about the research, funding opportunities, or ideas on how to gradually start a program from the options we presented in our recommendation, I'm happy to answer them anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Ms. Donaldson, is there anything that you wish to add on behalf of the committee today?
You're... I'm on now?
You're on now.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'd like to speak to the East Shore Park recommendation.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. A main focus and goal of the Parks Advisory Committee since its founding has been to expand park opportunities for the citizens of Emeryville, and it's been really hard, because sites are very few and far between, land costs are high, and the sites that are available are usually pretty small, even when they're built with the development projects that come online. The five acres along the south side of Pal Street presents a really unique opportunity for an amazing, you know, regionally attractive park, highlighting the Emeryville Crescent, providing educational opportunities, habitat, all those things, and as well as a green infrastructure solution for the Pal Street flooding. So it has numerous sources of funding because of the different aspects involved there. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking ceremony for the Emeryville Point Emery project, and the Parks and Recreation Committee began advocating for that project ten years ago. With the planning and coordination and agency permitting and all that goes into a bayfront project, ten years is not unusual. So the committee would love to see, to advance this project, which has been on the CIP since 2016, some movement to just get the ball rolling on this project. There's a lot of necessary groundwork that could be started now, such as negotiating the MOU with the East Bay Regional Parks District, who has the oversight of that particular piece of property, and determining the conditions that would be required to obtain the $400,000 coastal conservancy grant. So there's an opportunity to take advantage of land that the city would not have to pay for, to work with the East Bay Regional Parks to come up with some kind of a partnership, hopefully, and to get this project underway so that we can see it before 2033. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming. I'd like to turn first to public comment. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on the recommendations? I'll wind in the staff report and present it this evening on the Parks and Recreation Committee. We'll get three minutes to do so. And April, did we receive any comment cards in advance of tonight's meeting?
No, we did not, Mayor.
Okay. So public comment is now closed, and I'll turn to discussion. I have some comments, but I would be happy to see if others have anything they want to say. Member Donahue?
I'm the liaison to Parks and Rec Committee, and everything that those two members of our committee talked about tonight is really true, and there's solid social science study for the child development side of the nature play recommendation that is undeniable. And I think that it's important for us to do that, and we are looking forward to having that part of the Emeryville Crescent made much more available to the public by that kind of proposal that we've seen, conceptual proposal for the development to the east of the firehouse. And I strongly support the staff report in approving of this.
Thank you. Others who wish to comment? So I want to really appreciate both committee member Donaldson and Weber for coming this evening and for really succinctly expressing in extremely well-put words your thoughts and feelings on the importance of these issues. And with everyone's indulgence, just take a moment to share how much I personally relate to what committee member Weber said. So as I think all the council members here and most other people know, I take a month every year, and I go hiking in the wilderness. And there is, you know, I hiked across the Upper Peninsula of Michigan this year. Last year, I hiked across Minnesota. This last week, I bicycled from, trek in the Netherlands to Belgium's capital and spent time in nature. As a child, I lived in a rural community, and across the street from me was a ravine, and I used to go down and catch frogs and catch mice and play with, you know, my friends and climb in the trees and build the forts that were made out of deadwood, just like Patty talked about. And some of the things that actually bring me the most joy in my life come from things that I associate with that time, right? I really enjoy it, just like laying in grass. I, my mom used to fix me a peanut butter and honey sandwich every time I came home from being outside. And when I go on my biking trips and hiking trips, the only type of Cliff Bar I pack is a peanut butter and honey Cliff Bar, because at the end of my day, that's like the thing that makes me happiest. And there's just so much, you know, at the beginning of the year, I asked, the one item I asked for this year was to do a study on urban trees, because I really think that it's really important that we expose children to nature. It's good for all the cognitive and social and mental health reasons that Patty mentioned. It's also good for our environment and our community. But it really, it really brings, like, calmness and wellness to people. There's a lot of science data that shows just ten to twenty minutes of sitting in a park surrounded by trees and birds reduces blood pressure and increases types of hormones and chemical neurons releases in the brain that promote calmness. And I do think that we are an overstimulated society, and I'm not a parent, and so it's really hard for me to speak to this from a parental perspective, but I just can speak from somebody with, you know, who's lived through trauma of my own and went through counseling about how to engage the things that were traumatic for me. Nature was my solution, and it has really worked for me, physically healthy, mentally healthy, just giving me space, access back to my own, like, inner peace. And so I am very supportive of these. Probably it's not a surprise to anyone on the council. I don't think anyone here is opposed to them. But what I would like to offer, since we're not, this is just an information item at this point, I would just like to offer to the two members who came here this evening to sit down and have a conversation about how we can maybe integrate things the City Council is already working on related to studying trees and the placement of trees. I have had conversations offline with the city manager and others about my interest in trying to do a certain type of forest recreation in the city. A native, there's a native indigenous practice for restoring forests that aren't all placed by us with a landscape architect, but are really designed to actually let the forest be what it would naturally be. And so I think that there's, there's some things that are harmonious with also just traditional land practices and the way that this community used to be before people were here. And I think that there is no reason why, even as tightly wound into the inner core of the Bay Area as we are, that there's any reason why we can't model how to do that. So I've had an interest in that for a while, and I've been talking to staff about how to make that accessible to people, but especially children. So I really appreciated this staff report and these recommendations. I'm really grateful to member Donahue as the liaison for the last few years, but also to the committee for these items. And so I'll just personally extend my offer to take you up on those requests to have a conversation about what we can do further in preparing for a CIP item next year, because I think it's really important that we do that. I think it's very, very important we do that next year. So that's my comments. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to add or share? No?
I support working with the committee members to make sure that these are included in our next CIP round. I think that's the natural and appropriate place to kind of prioritize these, and I really want to thank them for the time and the very thoughtful presentation. You know, I actually really thought the research was interesting about kids, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you so much for that. We'll look forward to having further discussion on that item. And let me move us now to item 12.3, which is our AV 361 resolution. Just to be clear in the record, this is, I'm sharing this just to be transparent with the other council members. The legal advice that some folks are giving at other agencies recently is that we should be more specific about making these findings as we move forward, because so many of the COVID protocols are being canceled or rescinded. So just want to be, I think we probably, at the end of the year, need to have a conversation about how we want to move forward around this item for a number of reasons, but for the time being, we just want to state for the record that the findings require that the state of emergency still exists, in either a local or state, and we do have a state or state of emergency, and that we find that it's in the health, safety, welfare, and the best interests of our staff and ourselves and the public to continue having these meetings remotely. That just requires us to be really cognizant of the fact that we don't think we can do those meetings in person without presenting some risk to the public. So I just want to be really clear that we kind of moved through this item because it's become a routine thing for us to do, but that's what we're voting on each time we do it. So with that, I'll open it for public comment and ask if any members of the public wish to comment on AV 361. And I see there's a hand. I'll recognize Chris McCormick, please, for two minutes.
Great. I just want to say, I think it's great that you guys are going to these meetings over Zoom. And I just want to also add that I thought I submitted a public comment card for this meeting on Thursday, so I'm not sure if I submitted it incorrectly or if it got lost, but I did enter my email address in the email address field. So just one request that if possible, someone does submit a comment card online and they entered the email address, that they basically get emailed that their comment's been received or something, so that they know it's been submitted. But I'll go ahead and get my thoughts together again and make an actual public comment at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to put a pin in that, because if you did give public comment, I'm going to ask April to check that right now for us, Chris. And if you did give a public comment and we didn't read it, we will put it in the record tonight. So just bear with us for a moment while we do that. I appreciate your indulgence. Okay. So other public comment for the AV 361 item? Okay, seeing none, I will, yeah, we'll just put Chris over there for the time being. And April, if you would just please check to see if we received a public comment. Member Martinez?
Yeah, I just wanted to check in with our city attorney's office to see, I know at one of the agents, one of the other agencies on which I serve, we're talking about just changing this language for this specific item to also include the provisions of, what is it, SB 2449? The, the piece of state legislation that impacts public and hybrid meetings. So I'll just ask the city attorney's office to look into that and bring that back to our next meeting if any changes need to be made.
You can definitely do that.
Thank you, Member Martinez. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I'll just note that I'm currently testing and quarantining, because I was exposed, and I need to test again negative tomorrow to make sure that I'm safe. So again, I know it feels like life's returned to normal, but we're still trying to do best practices to keep everyone safe, and I'm glad that I don't potentially expose any of you before I'm out of the woods.
And we thank you for not making us sick. This is about 450 people a day in the United States who still die of COVID. So I don't know why we declared it over, but it's not really going to happen that way. Member Donahue?
Well, I just want to reveal that I'm testing positive right now for COVID after having traveled. And I did have symptoms about a week ago, and I was so pleased that I was able to get that fifth booster, which addresses Omnicom, before I left, but I still had fever, sore throat, and lung inflammation, and the whole nine yards. So we are no way done with COVID, that's for sure. We just have to somehow not spread it, be a little more careful, and keep getting vaccinated.
Yes, please get your boosters. Are there any other people wish to discuss this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
That's it.
Oh, okay. I thought, okay. So we have Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Martinez, to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. And April, did you have a chance to see if we received another public comment?
I believe he said that he sent it in last Thursday. I looked back that far. I did not see it, but I'll, I'll check with IT tomorrow, see if they can do something. But no, I did not find it now, Mayor.
Okay. So apologies to Chris McCormick if we did receive it and we didn't read it into the record, that we would apologize to you for that. What we'll do is, we'll do a double check if you have that comment. I don't want to ask you to repeat the work you did, but if you have that comment and you'd like to send it, if you go, you can go to the, submit an online comment card. You could email the clerk's office directly. You can also email the City Council that comment, but if we do find it or you share it with our staff, we'll have them share with all of us so that we receive it timely from you. And then we'll also ask that it be read into the record at the next meeting with a note that it was intended for this meeting if it's time-sensitive for some reason. So thank you for understanding, and we apologize for that. We're going to go to Agenda Item 13, which is Department Head Reports, and so we have a Planning Director's Report on the Planning Commission Activities of September 22, 2022. We have one item, and I'd like to recognize Planning and Community Development Director Charlie Bryant. Charlie Bryant. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Bowders and members of the city council. This is my monthly report on the activities of the planning commission. Their last meeting was on September 22nd, as Mayor Bowder said, and they had one item on their agenda as listed on your agenda. I will note that all seven commissioners were present at the meeting, and the item was a public hearing on amendments to the planning regulations regarding sidewalk cafes and parklets. As the council may recall, you initiated this planning regulation amendment at your May 3rd meeting, and you referred it to the planning commission for public hearing and recommendation. This was that public hearing. They unanimously voted to recommend adoption of these amendments, and they did also recommend a few modifications. This will be coming to you for public hearing for your consideration of adoption at your next meeting on October 18th. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Are there any questions related to that report? Okay, seeing and hearing none, that will conclude the planning director and department head reports. Are there any other, actually, department heads who need to report this evening, Mr. Paulson?
There is not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So item 14 is our future agenda item requests from council members. Are there any members who have future agenda items that they would like to request this This is always the worst item for me, because I feel like I always write down something somewhere that I'm like, oh, I should ask about that. And then I'm like, what was it? So I don't have my little notepad with me because I'm only living out of a bicycle bag, so I don't know the answer. Nobody, did you feel like we had something? I feel like we had some, no, okay. Maybe it was last time. Maybe it was, I think we had something last time. Yeah, that's what it was. Okay. So I see no request for future agenda items. So that will bring us to item 15, and the time in California is 8:37 PM on Tuesday, October 4th. This meeting is now adjourned. You all have a lovely week. Take care.
Hey, Mayor.
Good night.